Zone zoning ordinance and we wouldn't allow something to happen here that wasn't in conformance with our own ordinance.
Right. That's all the questions I have for now. I will review all of this again. And I think one of the issues, and I know Mr. McGough brought this up, was the cost. And that, again, that's one of the bigger issues that we have to look at, just to make sure there are no continued costs moving forward. But thank you for coming in.
Thank you for having us.
Mr. Wechsler?
Yes, I just want to follow up on something Councilman Rogan brought up, just for my education. What happens to the Scranton Planning Commission?
Nothing.
We still have the Scranton Planning Commission?
We still have our own planning commission.
We still have City Planner?
Yes.
And it's a recommending body still, but it's operating under the SAPA laws if this...
Well, we would be operating, we would be using this document as our guidance document, but in all other respects, we would operate the same way that it does. The Planning Commission, besides making recommendations to your body on certain things like vacated streets and things, reviews and approves subdivision plans and land development plans, all that would continue just like it does now.
Because I know a lot of things go from Scranton to Lackawanna County has a Planning Commission also.
Yeah.
Is this another group that would have to be involved in it? Would there be three stages now?
No, no. The State Planning Code required a lot of actions. If a city has a comprehensive plan and a county has a comprehensive plan, certain actions have to be referred to both for comment. But that wouldn't apply to SAPA. They wouldn't, that wouldn't be a third layer that you would have to go back to.
The thing that came out of this tonight that I'm more concerned with is the review of the zoning ordinance, more than this plan.
That's, I mean, that's the nitty gritty.
Having served on the zoning board, I'm quite familiar with it.
Yep.
And there are a lot of cases that either should never be at the zoning board, or a lot of cases that should be at the zoning board.
Right.
That don't happen right now.
Right.
And I agree with Mr. Rogan.
And like I said, more and more of that stuff comes up every day.
I'm more concerned with that than this plan.
Yeah.
When the new ordinance would be reviewed, how long is it that, from review to acceptance to implementation?
I'm going to guess it's going to be, it would take at least a year to maybe 18 months. By the time there's a prescribed set of hearings and things like that, they take a while to put together, but a year to 18 months.
When you go third, all the questions get asked, so thank you very much.
Good line.
Yes, thank you. From what I looked at, I guess the previous council had a concern about the financial aspect of this plan. If I'm hearing you correctly, the only money that we would have to put forward is $200 a year, am I correct?
I think that'd be the only money that we would be required to spend.
Right.
I mean, we would hope to move forward with the zoning ordinance, but...
Okay. And from what I understand, from what you just said, we have to update the zoning ordinances anyway, correct?
Well, we have to update the comprehensive plan every 10 years. The zoning board, the zoning ordinance needs to be updated. We're not required by any law to update it, but it needs it because it's old.
Okay. So we have to update the comprehensive plan. If we were to join SAPA, that would possibly save us $500,000?
Whatever the cost of a comprehensive plan would be, I would say at least $100.
Okay. And if we don't join, we're going to have to do the comprehensive plan anyways?
We're going to have to do it eventually, yes.
And we're going to have to pay $100,000 that we don't have?
Yeah.
Right.
Okay. Do you think if Scranton were to join SAPA, would it prompt other communities to get involved? Would that spur more interest, or...
Well, I mean, Scranton already has joined SAPA.
Right, but I mean if we were to...
But I'd have to say no. I mean, I think in the beginning in 2005, when this effort started, and with a lot of work by Denise, there was a lot of outreach to the other municipalities. And the ones that aren't part of the plan just weren't interested. Now, has that changed since then? Maybe, but I haven't heard of any.
A letter was sent to each municipality, and we were told really, do not coax any municipality to be a member of this, because if you have to coax any municipality, they're not going to really participate very much. And so one letter was sent out, and the people who came to the meeting, the people who showed interest, that's who we planned with. Maybe if communities were re-approached, they might be interested. I'm not sure.
Okay.
The only community that would probably be in this, if given the chance, would have been Old Forge. They were very interested.
Old Ford was interested.
Yeah, but we quit, they weren't contiguous with anybody. Once ransom, booked it and then dropped out.
Right.
There was no, no one reached Old Forge.
Yeah. There have to be contiguous municipalities.
Okay.
You can't leave a gap in there.
Yeah, so Dunmore only got in through the reach from Scranton. No one else touches Dunmore except the city of Scranton.
Okay. And just to clarify, there's no, this plan has no effect on the Planning Commission or the zoning board?
No.
Okay. I appreciate you coming in, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McGough, before we finish, I do have one follow-up. Mr. Gahan asked a good question, and the answer was that, you know, because of joining SAPA, we wouldn't have to revise our own plan. How would SAPA be picking up the cost of that plan? If it would cost the city approximately $500,000, I would assume it would cost closer to a million to do for this much land.
Well, that's my estimate. I'm sorry.
Right. It'll be a six-figure number, obviously.
The plan is done. It's been paid, mostly paid for by DCED, some grants from the Scranton Area Foundation.
And Willery Foundation.
The Willery Foundation.
Also Pendot.
Pendot, because there's a transportation element to it.
And the communities themselves.
Yeah, and Scranton's put in, I think, 32...
34,000 something.
Again, maybe just clarification, say, so basically what you're saying is that the SAPA plan would almost be a substitute for...
Right. The comprehensive plan.
The comprehensive plan.
It would be...
So that the planning has already been done, we would merely adapt it to our...
Right. You would basically take it off the shelf and say, this is our plan. And that will also bring 40 percent of Lackawanna County into alignment with the Bay County Comprehensive Plan.
It serves...
Oh, no, that's fine.
Each community, this serves as their comprehensive plan.
Okay, understood. That's...
Yeah, our plan was 93, so we were looking to use it up on Clark Screen to satisfy our obligations. Denise, with all the matching grants and stuff, what was it, like 350?
It was about $300,000. The plan cost about $300,000, not including the Willery Foundation and Scranton Area Foundation. They helped the communities.
So that's another 50,000. So I mean, so you're talking six figures.
Well, in lieu of, if Scranton were to not join, instead of going through the process of spending all that money to create our own plan, couldn't we just take this work that was done, chop it off, and edit how we like, and have it for Scranton revised plan? I guess that would be for Mr. King.
I think Cindy Campbell said everyone had to enact the same plan word for word, didn't she?
I think you're talking about...
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think I know what you're saying.
Right.
Can we pull out our... Possibly. I mean, a lot of the plan talks about the different municipalities, so there's things that wouldn't make sense for just Scranton. Just like there, if Scranton doesn't participate, there's a lot of things in here that doesn't make sense for the rest of the municipalities.
If Scranton wasn't in the group with the other communities, especially the Abingtons areas, they would be, they would have to redo a plan, and they would have to allow for much more, as I said earlier, the rural areas would have to allow for much more, you could say, competing development of commercial and office, industrial, et cetera.
Yeah.
Industrial parks, et cetera.
Well, in answer to your question, we kind of asked it in reverse, that after Scranton wasn't interested, could we, like, we asked, could we edit it down and just make it? And the state officials said, you know what, it really was built with all municipalities in line. It was one thing to lose North Abington Township, which is the area up around the Lackawanna State Park, but they said to lose Scranton, or Scranton to lose the Abingtons, that was just, you know, bridge too far, as far as ever concerned.
It couldn't be enacted without the city. Couldn't be implemented.
Anything else?
That's it.
I also wanted to say, something, something was asked about the future and reviews of developments, and some groups in their implementation phase and continuing into the future do have committees that meet, and they review, some of them only review large-scale developments. I remember that from the implementation documents that... So they would give their opinion on a, if we organized the implementation that way, they would give their opinion on large-scale developments.
I believe that's all the questions we have, and again, I would, on behalf of council, thank you for your participation in this caucus. We will discuss and we will talk with the members of the administration to see if this is something that we wish to turn into a formal resolution for adoption.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And if it did go to next, that next step, I would anticipate we'd have to have a few more of these kinds of meetings.
Thank you. This is adjourned. We will be meeting briefly in the council chambers, or clerk's office, I'm sorry. 6:21. We're here, we're on your time, please.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world, and for all those who have passed away in our community during the past week. And I'd like to make special note of, my brother-in-law, Bill O'Boyle, passed away last evening. People in the city may remember Bill. He was the first general manager of the Hilton Hotel when it was built, and he was also a former resident of the city of Scranton. Thank you.
Mr. Wechsler?
Here.
Mr. Rogan?
Here.
Mr. Lascom? Mr. Gahan?
Here.
Mr. McGahan?
Here. I'd just like to make note that Mr. Lascom did call prior to the meeting, and he is ill and will not be able to attend. Dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third order, 3A, a breakdown of the eligible salaries for the liquid fuels account for the months of January, February, and March 2014.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3B, tax assessors report, hearing date held March 19, 2014.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3C, audit status from Robert Rossi and Company, received April 3, 2014.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3D, single tax office, city funds distributed comparison report for March 2013, 2014.
Are there any comments?
Yes, Mr. McGough. We have been in receipt of this report. We are going to review it this week and discuss it next week.
Thank you. Received and filed. Do any council members have announcements?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Just one. St. Anne's Maranite Catholic Church, located at the corner of Sumner Avenue and Price Street in West Scranton, will hold its annual bake sale fundraiser this coming Saturday, April 12, from 2 till 6 p.m., and this coming Palm Sunday, April 13, from 11 a.m. to 2 p.m. Homemade Lebanese pastries and delicacies will be available for purchase just in time of the Easter holiday. And as somebody who lives only a few blocks from this church, I know that everything they make is delicious.
And I just have one, two, four announcements. April 24, from 6 to 9 p.m., will be the Bill Garrity Park fundraiser at Trax at the Radisson. Please help support this great cause. Checks can be made payable to the Bill Garrity Park, and just to know, Bill Garrity used to be a city councilman from North Scranton. There are two Easter egg hunts this weekend. One is in South Scranton. The South Scranton Neighborhood Watch is holding it this Saturday at 2 p.m. at Mayor Connors Park at 510 Orchard Street. There will be prizes and light refreshments. The second one is at Weston Field, their Easter egg hunt. Ages 3 to 10 may participate, this Saturday at noon at Weston Field. And finally, the North Scranton Neighborhood Group is holding a cleanup event this Saturday, April 12, at 9 a.m. Volunteers are going to meet at West Market Street and Mary Street in the parking lot, and they are going to be cleaning up that bottom part of Mary Street, which is in desperate need of help. It's heavily littered. So anyone from North Scranton or anywhere in the city that wants to help out, they would appreciate it. And that's all I have. Thanks.
A couple of announcements. First of all, City Hall will be closed April 18. So if there's any business, please make note that that's Friday, April 18, City Hall will be closed. And also, DPW will not be working on Monday, April 21, which may delay refuse collections for that week, so please be, take note. Also, next week, next week's council meeting will be held on Wednesday evening, the 16, at the normal time, and not on Thursday. A couple of other things that we've received, that have been spoken about in the past. One of the things we should make note of, we did receive some information, some of the, many are, some records were damaged with the water problems that were experienced in City Hall. We did, we did find out that those records need to be kept. They cannot be destroyed. And we received an estimate, or we had someone come in and look at them, and we have received an estimate on what it would cost to either restore them as they are, you know, in their original form, or to possibly transform them in some way so that they can be better kept, either, you know, digitally or whatever. And so we did receive somewhat, an estimate on that, and we're also looking into whether insurance coverage would cover the cost of doing that, so that it would not be a further cost to the city. But, so we are exploring those, that possibility. Also, on tonight's agenda, there are a number of new items. First of all, a contract with the, for a city engineer. Also, there are two appointments for open records officer, one for the opens, open records officer, and one for an alternate. Those would be people who would be dealing with write-to-know requests, et cetera. And last, there was some question on, I think it's item 7A, that we received during the week. That was resolved by our solicitor, and we will be voting on that this evening. And that's all.
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
Andy Sprague, citizen of Scranton, fellow Scrantonian. Few words on SAPPA again. Scranton Abington Planning Association. I can put one of my feet in Scranton and one in Dixon City. I could also put one of my foot in Taylor and Scranton at the same time. One in Muzik and Scranton at the same time, as well as one in Scranton and Dunmore. How far would I have to search my feet to get up to the Abingtons? We don't have anything common with them. They moved away from Scranton to get away from us. That's the reason they're up there, not because they love us. They get away from us. They want to have their cities like they want. They don't want people coming in there that's undesirable, from what I got from... They want them to come to us. That's why Janet never brought this up, and I can see why she never brought it up. It doesn't make sense. If you decided you want to go that way, I suggest you contact Muzik, Dixon City, and Taylor, as, well, Dunmore is already there, and ask them if they want to join us. They want to keep this at a small, like they said, they don't want a lot of people involved with this. This is only a select group, a clique, like everything else. I don't believe we should join a clique. We should be open. We're Valley people, and we should reach out to all our neighbors, because we're going to have to hit them for commuter tax. You realize that, we ain't going to make it. So your commuter tax is going to come up again. So let's work with our neighbors, our Valley neighbors, and see what we can resolve, because you know and I know, no matter what kind of a plan you got, Scranton is in trouble because of taxation. Nobody wants to come here because of taxation. That's the main reason. And you cannot resolve the taxation problem without making it worse. So let's, let's look at what we got and try to resolve the problems we do have. And as far as the police and firemen suing us for the pension plan, I remember a saying a long time ago, the inmates have finally taken over the asylum, and Scranton has become an asylum. We're trapped by the city workers, and it shouldn't be. They should be working for us, not keeping us back. You realize, as you keep raising taxes, you take food from people's mouth. You take children that's going to be denied other things. For what? You've got to keep the employees in line. I don't care how you do it, but it's got to be done. They deserve a fair pay, and they do deserve their pension. I can understand that. But somehow or some way, you've got to resolve that problem before you can even take on other problems. I see the theater came up again. That was a Koz, where Leonard's was. That was a Koz. I guess you would remember. Well, maybe you don't. Maybe money is weren't there. But that was a Koz. And for 10 years, he got away with nothing, and then he sold it, made a profit on the real estate. But that shows you what a Koz does. It does nothing, because they don't have to maintain it. They only have to stay for 10 years, and then they go. They just get away. That's what happened at Center Point. If you ever look at the businesses that move in Center Point, up in Pittston, you find most of them were in Wilkes-Barre or Kingston. And they abandoned them communities to go to Center Point because they got their taxation. That's what the whole, crux of the whole situation is, taxation. Unless you can keep taxes at an affordable level, the city will never get any industry in here. We lost a lot. When my boss was here, when I was with the elevator, he told me that he bought a lot in Taylor. And he said, Andy, the money I've saved on Scranton taxes will be for completely renovating this building. And that's what it did. If you cannot control taxation, you cannot control the future of the city, no matter what kind of a system or people you want to join. And that's the whole quirks. It's been the quirks. For four, five, you've been there, well, Lascom isn't there, but three years have been there for them, four years, and still you haven't solved the problem.
Thank you, Mr. Sprague. Ozzy Quinn?
Ozzy Quinn, Scranton Lackawanna County taxpayers and Hill Neighborhood Association. I want to announce that next Tuesday, April 15, 6:30 p.m., we're going to have a voter education debate. First debate will be 6:30 between District 112, will be against candidates Kevin Aggerty and Bob Munley. Following that debate, there'll be candidates for 113, will be candidate Marty Flynn and candidate Lee Morgan. We will not have one for 114, because there's a Republican and a Democrat. There's no two. We'll have them in the general election. It'll be on ECTV. We'll thank the council again, and we're going to have it here, as we did with the county government study commission and the commissioners. And, you know, it should be, people will attend, watch, and they'll get an education, hopefully. We met, the Hill Neighborhood Association met on March 20. I remember you people were meeting the same day. We're planning to meet again on April 23. We moved it to a Wednesday, so some of you people might want to come, okay? Just to give you a hint at some of our things on our agenda, we're looking at, the former mayor was at the last one, and also Lieutenant Crofton and Officer Vaughn, so it was nice of Chief Graziano to send those people there, and they told the people how to meet compliance. We had about 40 people at the meeting, so it turned out real well. Hopefully, next being on the 23rd, it's a Wednesday, 7 p.m. at ICC Church Basement Hall. And hopefully, we're going to talk about Na'od Pool, we're going to talk about streetlights, parking, housing. So it should be interesting, because they're all city-related elements, okay? And I want to tell you that, keep, trying to keep the pride, okay, and trying to do things in the Hill neighborhood, I want to thank License and Inspection of Lips, Mr. Hinton and his staff, because of the fact that, I think I sent up, I guess about 25 houses that had couches or other living room furniture on the front porch. And that looks awful, you know? And so, you know, hopefully that we can keep that up, and we eliminated, also went around and picked up a lot of garbage, so they've been very helpful. And I hope they continue in the future with that, you know? And I know they will, because they want to see something done. So we've been active, and I've been active with the Hill. I've been several meetings with various organizations, like a medical council, I just met with them yesterday, and trying to partner with them and various other groups, okay? So I appreciate if someone can attend on the 23rd. Thank you. And in regards to SAPA, oh, you know, why I want you on the 23rd also is because there's no coverage. I asked the Scranton Times to cover it, they don't even put it in the paper. So people don't know what's going on, okay? If they don't know what's going on, you don't know what's going on if you don't read it in the paper, okay? You could get up there and speak, and talk all night, and try to resolve things, and you're not going to get it resolved, you know? For some reason, they just don't want to cover us, okay? It's a shame, but that's it. Now, in regards to SAPA, I just want to point out that the Lackawanna County Regional Commission has a comprehensive plan, okay? And they have a zoning plan. So I don't, you see the conflict there, okay? Also... Also, all these boroughs have comprehensive plans. The city of Scranton has a comprehensive plan since 1992, all right? And of all the times that CDBG funds that were spent since 1992, I'll bet not one time that any administrator, any councilperson, or any OCD director ever looked at that comprehensive plan to see how the, what to follow in regards to looking at the physical and social and economic elements in the city as recommended by that study, okay? It's up in the planning office, it's collecting dust, and it's a shame, you know? It's really a shame. We spent money for it, and there were things in that plan that if we followed them, instead of a shotgun approach with that OECD money every year, you know? If we followed that plan, we would have had things accomplished in regards to housing, infrastructure, whatnot, okay? A lot of communities have comprehensive plans to see that they follow them with the CDBG funds. It's only practical, and that's what you would do it for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Quinn. Dave Dobson?
Good evening, Dave Dobson, resident, taxes paid. I asked a few weeks ago about Steamtown, and I'm going to ask again. In 1994, they were incorporated, or whatever, instituted, and they were given $5.2 million a year to operate as a museum, tax-exempt in the city of Scranton. And they were reduced during the sequester by 10% each year over two years. And it's getting down to the wire for them, so please consider. All I'm asking for is a letter to Congressman from council that you support it, or if you don't really support it, then withhold your signature. But the people that do support it, try and get something for them. At least get it out there. And I'd like to mention something about the DPW. If you break up the furniture, and it's not a big giant piece, or you're not throwing out an entire living room suit or something, all in one week, they do take it. And that's why I support, and the limitless, I don't support the bag theory, because what do you do with that couch when it's no longer useful, or it breaks, or something? You set it out in your yard, some people do, and they set there forever, and there's rats and whatever else moves in. It's an eyesore, and it's also a fire hazard. I've seen couches catch houses on fire, because somebody was out there smoking or whatever, and dropped it, and for some reason, they smolder forever, under the right conditions. So I'd also like to mention with Naog, the swimming pool, I have always wondered whether utilities are paying anything towards the power line that runs directly through the east side of Naog Park. I mean, it's just, I suspect not, and it's a considerable area of land, so. And once again, I'd like to mention that it's time for these utilities to fix, start fixing the streets. I'm going to drop that one in coming weeks, and I'll be keeping my eye out during the summer. If I see it's getting late in the season, and there seems to be no plan, well, I might be a little more radical. Who knows? And on TSP collections, Mr. Hickey, one of the mayor's consultants, mentioned that there may be large amount of apartment buildings paying a single fee. And that is not right. There should be at least double or triple the fee, if they're making $7,000 or $8,000 a year on rent. I mean, it costs $800 a month to rent a house in this town anymore. And I found a mortgage more convenient, but then and again, you're stuck where you're at. You can't just, if the economy goes south, you just can't pack your bags and leave camp. Now, one derogatory thing I heard on SAPA was that they were responsible for Darren Industries down on Dixon Avenue. I don't know if that's true, but we do have to be careful as to what kind of industries, because they literally wrecked that neighborhood for a long time. I mean, picture walking in your front door and seeing a half a dozen diesel trucks that don't want to shut their engines off. And by the way, diesel trucks, if it's during the day, they require very little electricity. So I worked on trucks throughout my life, and semis and stuff, and they will literally idle them all day, so they don't have to use a starter. And it's very, very, first time I ever got pains in my chest was in the diesel garage. Hint, hint. So, okay, I'm going to give a golden parrot, once again, to the Supreme Court for their decision on limitless funds for campaign. They even have, the lobbyists mad, because the polit, they can't tell a politician that they're tapped out. Is that ridiculous or not? Thank you, and have a good night. Don't forget, bok bok.
Thank you, Mr. Dobson. Anyone else wish to address council?
Good evening, Council, Marie Schumacher. First off, I noticed in the paper, there's an RFP from the city for traffic signal maintenance. And a couple of questions. Number one, I know you were investigating because of the complaints of the lighting, the signalization project downtown. Are those lights fixed, or do they have sensors that are supposed to be operating to change them when there's no traffic in the opposite direction?
From what I'm told, both, that they operate on a timer during the day, and then, I forget at what time, most of them go to a sensor operated with the flow of traffic, you know, whatever the major flow of traffic is, you know, to be green.
Okay, now, does this RFP maintenance include adjusting those, or just changing non-functioning bulbs? Do you know?
I believe the maintenance is simply for, you know, the operational part of it, not for the, you know, the actual signalization.
Okay, thank you. 5F, what is Local Lodge 2462, and what is the issue that's covered by the memorandum?
That's the Single Tax Office.
Single Tax Office. What, you mean the workers? Okay, and what is, what is the issue that's, that the mayor is being given execution authority? What is the change to the collective bargaining agreement?
I'm not sure what the change is. I could find out.
I would appreciate that. Thank you. And I would just remind you all that SAPA is in the recovery plan, so that was a commitment, as far as I'm concerned. D and E, was this, was the designation of the Open Records Officer was never an issue brought before council in the past, was it? I mean, that's just one of the functions.
I do believe that we voted on it.
You do?
No, I, I thought I remember that when, I'm trying to think of who was the Open Records Officer, and...
It's always been the business administrator.
I believe Mr. McGowan became the Open Records Officer, and I thought it came before us to vote on that.
Okay. I didn't, I didn't recall that coming before.
Maybe I'm mistaken.
But that is not the exclusive responsibility of this new office, new position, is it? Okay. Then, during caucus tonight, you, there were a number of things brought up, especially about one that's being introduced tonight for CECA. And one of the, one of the justifications given was about ongoing projects. And I think our capital budget is about close to zero, and so I don't, I question how many ongoing projects we have that CECA is involved in. And then, if one of the other, one of the other objections, they should have, it seems to me, maybe the RFP was written incorrectly, if the other firm was not given the opportunity to include some of the things that are being used to give it to CECA for, again, $40,000 for a city that's struggling, and, you know? And then, also, on the way out, I stopped to see what was on 5D. Did anybody look at that, or do you have it there that you could tell me whether or not those were adjusted for the increase in the property taxes, or the increase in any of the rates?
I believe those are just...
Just raw figures?
They are just raw numbers. I don't think that there's any, this is the total dollar amounts.
Okay, well, then I think we're in real trouble, because that's as of 3/31, and our real estate taxes, which the discount period ended on 3/31, so these revenues go through, we are only up by 6.7%, not anywhere near the double-digit increase that we had. So I think we're in trouble. I think, looking here, see the number of people, I think, I think most people frankly have just given up on this city, and don't think we're going to make it through. And I still do have the blight stuff that one of these weeks I'll get to. Thank you.
And just to respond, I, Mr. Wexler did say that he is going to review this with Mr. Bolzoni, and get an explanation as to the numbers, rather than just presenting raw numbers.
Okay, thank you.
I didn't mean to speak for you.
No, that was, very good.
Good evening, Council, Joan Hodewannitz. My only issue tonight is a story that was on the front page of the Sunday Times, this past Sunday, about six-figure cops, and it was the overtime story. I'm not here to say that the policemen and women who received overtime did not deserve it. I'm sure they earned their pay. I am, though, concerned how we are managing our budget for overtime. If last year, we budgeted $550,000 for overtime, and we actually spent $972,000, how is it that we cut the budgeted overtime down to $225,000 for this year? It seems to me like we should have, if anything, maintained the figure or raised it. I don't understand that, because clearly, there's going to be a major shortfall. And what is the grand total for overtime for the police as of now? Does anybody know?
Offhand, I do not.
But, I think when we, I think budgeting should be a year-long process, number one. And I know that you probably think about it year-long, although it seems to be a fast and furious the last 90 days of the year. And we are, we simply, it seems to me, we're almost throwing numbers into the budget without any correlation with reality. If we have a track record, historically, of what we can expect, there should be, there shouldn't be this kind of surprise, to cut the budgeted overtime in half, when we almost, we far exceeded the overtime last year. I would only urge you that as Mr. Amoroso continues to do his magic, as we move down the road towards fall and start another budget process, we have got to have some realistic figures. Obviously, how we pay for these figures is another issue. But I don't think we do ourselves any good by putting in unrealistic numbers in the budget, and then having a surprise like this come out. And then today, of course, we have the other story that came out about how we came in dead last, in terms of recovery, out of 100 metropolitan areas. That wasn't very funny. So I would just urge you to think budget 365 days a year, and as you get information, you know, you need to scrawl that away. You need to take advantage of people like Marie. I mean, she's a subject matter expert. In fact, if you want to spend my taxpayer dollar, hire her to advise you. I think that would be a good deal for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to address council?
Fifth order, 5A motions.
Mr. Wexler?
Thank you, Mr. McGough. Just a few things. First of all, I'd like to congratulate the organizers and participants of the first Scranton Half Marathon. I went down to the stadium, I didn't run it, I went down to the stadium to take a look at the finishers. And what I was impressed about was by the amount of families that were there, groups running together as families, young people there, old people there. I was very impressed by the whole family atmosphere. I look forward to next year, when it becomes more of a citywide, or weekend-wide event. I'm sure that the financial impact to the city was substantial, and once again, I'd like to congratulate everyone involved with it. On Monday night, Bill Gahan and I attended the North Scranton Neighborhood Association meeting, to give the neighbors an update on the Rockwell Avenue Bridge project. That Rockwell Avenue Bridge project is one of the projects that CECA is working on right now. And that group has done a great job in keeping all of our feet to the fire, city council, the mayor, state reps, and PennDOT, keeping their feet to the fire, keeping that project moving ahead. And through those groups, these things can happen. Also commenting about the budget process, I can guarantee you right now, Mr. Bolzoni and myself, we're getting numbers all the time. I'm new to this, I'm digesting the numbers. Mr. Bolzoni is a professional at it, and his goal and my goal are the same, is when it comes time for the budget, that we have real numbers. And like you said, real numbers may mean bad answers, but we do need realistic numbers as we move into the budget process. In terms of the SAPA meeting, I'd like to thank the people that came for it. Once again, this is a new issue for me, I'm going to have to digest it. I'm more concerned with the zoning aspect of the plan, as long as Scranton can maintain its zoning ordinance, which is a good ordinance right now, if it's enforced. Our biggest problem is that it's not, it's not enforced properly, or correctly, or all the time. One of the problems is, we don't have enough of inspectors or code officers out there, and that's something else that has to be addressed. This plan will have to be digested and evaluated again, to see what benefits it brings to the city. And if it brings benefits to the city, then it's something I think we should consider. If it penalizes the city, or penalizes Scranton because of our architecture and our infrastructure, I may not be for it. But I think it does deserve a second look, and go at it from there. And that's all I have, Mr. McGough.
Thank you. Mr. McGough?
Yes, a few items. I might also start off, like to start off with SAPA, and thank them for coming in tonight. I still have many of the same concerns that I had when I initially voted against SAPA, and we heard some of those concerns from some of the speakers tonight. And I think, as I believe as Mr. Spraglin mentioned, our immediate neighbors being out of it, especially Dixon City, which is an area where there's been a lot of development, you know, makes me question this plan. And from listening to the, you know, the supporters of SAPA... And from listening to the, you know, the supporters of SAPA, it sounds like nothing, there's no negatives for the city. But when you look deeper into it, I, I do have that feeling, and I know many residents of the city also do too, that the Abingtons want to use this plan and want to use Scranton as a dumping ground for undesired development in the Abingtons. I will reread the entire plan and, and take comments from residents as, you know, as they come in, if we are going to reconsider it. But as of now, I would lean towards continuing to oppose this plan. Next, a bit of good news that was in the newspaper. There's an article in the Scranton Times today regarding developer Charlie Jefferson buying the property on Adams Avenue. And it's a 120-year-old theater, most recently known as the Moonshine Theater. Previous to that, it was known as the Diva Theater. And in the eighties, it was owned by the Knights of Columbus, where they had dances and social events there. And I did have a chance to talk to Mr. Jefferson this morning about this project. And, and this project, just like everything else Mr. Jefferson has done in the downtown, really will be a benefit to the city. If, you know, if this gets off the ground and whatever direction he wants to go with it, whether it be, you know, using it as a traditional theater or having different social events there, I think it'll be a great plus for the downtown. And congratulations to Mr. Jefferson on all the work he has done. And hopefully, we'll, we'll see the same success with this project as his other buildings. Next, onto some OECD issues. As I mentioned a couple of weeks previously, myself and the administration and volunteers from the community have been part of the Citizens Advisory Council. And a big part of that job was developing a survey that would go out to the residents for you to tell us how you would like our federal tax dollars, our block grant money spent. That survey has been completed. I do want to read just a couple blurbs from the cover letter on the survey. It starts off, Dear Scrantonian, and it goes on about the city's five-year plan. And this survey will be used to, to help the elected officials distribute our CDBG money, home money, ESG money. These are the allocations that we see council make every year for paving. Different community groups will come and, and seek funding, demolition of hazardous structures, rehabilitation of structures. So the five-year comprehensive plan must include an item for it to be funded. So that's why these surveys are being sent out. It says, "Scranton is asking for your help to complete the enclosed questionnaire to provide your input on ideas and opinions in the future of the city's community development, housing, and homeless projects and goals." You may also utilize a fillable version of this form that I have here at scrantonpa.gov/ These surveys will also be available in city council's office, and they can be completed up until Friday, June 6, 2014. You can mail them into the city, you can drop them off at city council's office, or write down at OECD. But I would encourage everyone to participate in this survey. It is a few pages. It goes through pretty much any kind of development you could think of, from economic development needs to public facilities, assistance for families for affordable housing. And you can grade whether it's a high, medium, or low priority for you that we fund an activity. For instance, one of the areas that I think everyone supports is our neighborhood police program. And by filling out this survey, you can let your voice be heard that that's, that's a project and a use of those dollars that you support. Another one that's very popular is our paving program in low-to-modern income areas. If you support that program, make sure to fill out the survey and enlist it. Or if there's an area where you think the funds could be better spent, there is an area on here for other, where you could list items. Now, everything, you know, everything does, still does have to be, fall within the guidelines. They have to be in, in certain areas of the city, and they have to meet certain federal guidelines. But we're interested in getting your input through these surveys. And I do know that the city is going to be making efforts to advertise them through other means, going to neighborhood groups to present the surveys and just talk a little bit to the community about them. So that is that. Next, I have had, and I know we all have over the last few years, have a number of calls about individuals who are in need of handicap signs or individuals who notice their handicap signs in their neighborhood that aren't being utilized. Our office was informed that the DPW is in the process of removing signs that are no longer needed in the neighborhoods and trying to get those out to people who are in need of a sign. If you meet either of those criteria, or if you're a neighbor and you, you know that your neighbor moved out and they don't need their sign anymore, please call the city. You could call DPW at 348-4180 to relay this information, or you could call council's office at 348-4113. Finally, it was in the paper on Sunday, and it was mentioned again at, at council tonight, is the police overtime. One thing I want to mention about this, the, the police overtime that, that we see and that was illustrated on the front page of the paper is another item that is a result of the Supreme Court award that mandates staffing for the police department. Now, I know there are a number of ways that the city could look to, to reduce the overtime costs, but one I think that would be most beneficial to the taxpayers would be to, instead of paying as much overtime, hire a few more full-time officers, where we would have an, an officer working 40 hours a week instead of paying another officer time and a half. And by doing that, we would also have the benefit of having more officers on the streets. So that's something I think that, that we should look into, and keeping our neighborhood safe is certainly a top priority of mine. And hopefully, that's something that we could look at. And that's all for tonight. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Good evening. I, I would just first like to echo Mr. Wechler's comments about the half marathon this Saturday, or this past Sunday. It was organized very well, and it was a great success and also a great economic benefit to the city. So we'll look forward to that again next year. Also, just to update people and make people aware once again, I think it was mentioned last week or the week before, about the DPW street sweeping schedule. Tomorrow, the DPW will be sweeping the streets in Manuka. They have been doing so from April 7 until tomorrow. April 14 to April 18, they will be in the East Mountain area from Music Street to East Mountain Road, just so everyone is aware of that. And you can access the schedule, the street sweeping schedule, by going to the city's website, scrantonpa.gov, under the link, Public Works. And I'll reserve the rest of my comments for item 5C. Thanks.
Just a few brief things, and we'll get to the legislation. First, I, I did want to, again, reinforce the idea that we, we asked representatives from SAPA to come here this evening merely to present information about the overall plan. There is no current or pending legislation concerning SAPA. The caucus was simply for information gathering only. Should there be legislation dealing with SAPA that comes before us, we will again meet with representatives from SAPA, the administration, whoever it is that we feel can provide information as to, as to that plan. So this was not, tonight's meeting was not for any legislation, it was simply informational. Also, one of the, I'm going to have to clarify somewhat, but Mr. Quinn did mention the idea of people putting furniture on their porches. I, I know it's a city vi, it's a violation to put certain types of furniture out on an unenclosed porch, sofas especially, because they do become health hazards. So just so that people understand that, and as the weather gets warmer, we don't start moving, you know, furniture out onto the porches for the summer months. But I, I'll find out what the exact wording of that is and the clarification for it. And other than that, and I guess I should, again, reiterate the, a thank you to the people that ran, that organized and ran the half marathon. Being a runner and having participated in a number of such events, I do know that for every runner, for every runner that participates, there are probably five people that come with them. And there was over 2,500 runners on Sunday, which probably, there are probably in total throughout the city streets, probably 10,000 people out to, you know, part, I'll say, participate in that event. People going to restaurants, people just going to establishments, just people being around and, you know, buying a couple coffees, because it was a little bit cold during the morning. But it is, it is a great economic boon. You know, unfortunately, they are sort of one-day events. It would be nice if we could figure out some way to make them, expand them a little bit and so that we, you know, realize more of the benefits of those events. And that's all. Thank you.
5B for introduction and ordinance transferring both temporary and permanent easements over three parcels of property owned by the city of Scranton located at 2004, 2006 Sanderson Avenue, 2008 Sanderson Avenue, and 2011 and a half Rear Boulevard Avenue in connection with the Scranton Sewer Authority Sanderson Avenue Stormwater Separation Project.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it and so move.
5C for introduction, a resolution authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a professional services contract with SICO Associates Incorporated to serve as city engineer for the city of Scranton for the period of two years from April 15, 2014 through March 31, 2016.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question.
Yes, on the question. I might just have a few comments. As the Public Works Committee Chair, I am voting yes to introduce this legislation tonight, although I do have questions about it that I would like answered before next week's meeting. The administration proposes to award SICO the contract for city engineering services over the next two years, although they were not the lowest bidder. They were the second lowest bidder at $136,300. Contracted services that are publicly bid are typically awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. The lowest bidder in this case for this service was Peters Associates at $98,000. So the city will, in effect, be spending nearly $40,000 more for engineering services. The administration has chosen to award the contract to SICO based on the fact that they are involved in many ongoing projects within the city. The administration argues that bringing in a new engineer in the middle of these projects would be detrimental to the city. Now, I understand that SICO is involved in many different projects throughout the city and that they have been doing a great job. SICO's performance is not in question here. I would, however, like to know from the administration why they did not award Peters Associates the contract as the lowest bidder? Did they determine that Peters Associates was not a responsible bidder? And if so, upon what did they base their decision? So Mrs. Reed, if we could send that correspondence down to the mayor's office, I would appreciate that. I, I'm concerned here that we are choosing to spend almost $40,000 more for a service when we have a lower bidder for the work. It goes without saying that we don't have extra money to spend within the city. And I don't doubt for one second that SICO would continue to do a wonderful job for our city. However, unless there is a specific reason why Peters Associates, as the lowest bidder, was not awarded the contract, I would find it very difficult to vote in favor of this resolution. So I will be, I would hope that we would get an answer to that question before next week's meeting. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Anyone else have a question?
I would say that it, it might be in our due diligence to ask if a member of the administration would appear, either at caucus or at next week's meeting, to explain their choice to all of us, rather than, rather than just, and I will make that request personally.
Mr. McGough, do you, do you think we should have a representative from SICO as well?
I, I don't think that we're questioning SICO itself. I think that what we're questioning, or what's being questioned, is the reason for bypassing the low bidder. And so I, I, I don't think that SICO had any, I'm sure they had input into that decision, but that was not their decision to make. I would, I, I think it'd be more.
I was just thinking, if part of the reasoning is that there are projects that are currently going on, maybe SICO could speak to that.
I don't, that's not the question, though.
They could, and, and I certainly could ask if, you know.
It's, I'm just thinking, wouldn't it hurt to have, to have both?
Well, I, I, as I said, I will make that request on behalf of council. All those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it and so move.
5D for introduction, a resolution designating the city of Scranton's staff accountant Nancy Crake as Scranton's open record officer to receive requests for public records, to direct requests to appropriate personnel, to track Scranton's progress in responding to requests, and to issue interim and final responses under Pennsylvania's right-to-know law.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question.
Yes, I would just like to congratulate Mrs. Crake for this position. I've had the pleasure of working with her for four years, and I know that she will do a great job in this new position.
I would like to add that, as, as was asked from the podium, this is not the only responsibility of this position. This is merely a, I'll say, an additional part of the, the position. This being, the staff accounting position being one that was added through the DCED grant. So this is just a, a part of that responsibility for that position. All those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it and so move.
5E for introduction, a resolution designating the city of Scranton's business administrator David M. Bolzoni to act as Scranton's alternate open records officer to receive requests for public records, to direct requests to appropriate personnel, to track progress in responding to requests, and to issue interim and final responses under Pennsylvania's right-to-know law.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5E be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it and so move.
5F for introduction, a resolution authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a memorandum of agreement between Local Lodge 2462 and the city of Scranton and the school district of the city of Scranton regarding the single tax office collective bargaining agreement.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5F be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, I know it was brought up during citizens' participation as to what the nature of this was. I believe that the memorandum of understanding is simply the agreement that we split the costs of personnel at the single tax office with the school district, since both of us are partners in, in that operation. And I believe that that is what the, my reading of it is, that, that is what the memorandum of understanding is. All those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it and so move.
Sixth order, 6A, reading by title, file of council number 13, 2014, and ordinance abolishing enclosing OECD accounts with Community Bank, NA, and First National Bank, transferring the funds from those accounts to PNC Bank account listed below.
You've heard reading by title of item 6A. What is your pleasure?
I move that item 6A pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it and so move.
Seventh order, 7A, for consideration.
Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the committee on finance for adoption, file of council number 12, 2014, amending file of council number 11, 1999, as amended, entitled "Amending File of the Council Number 9, 1935, as amended, and ordinance regulating the licensing of purchasers of scrap gold, old gold, silver, jewelry, clothing, and other valuable articles, and providing penalties for the violation thereof by adding additional terms, increasing the licensing fee, increasing the penalties of violations thereof, providing for suspension of licenses, and modernizing the language thereof, and incorporating rules and regulations by further making amendments to increase the license fee in Section 2 from $50 to $100 per file of council number 178 of 1992, Section 1, codified in Chapter 340, peddling and soliciting, Section 340-13A, fees, and amending Section 4A to provide additional information to better identify the seller and the goods or article being sold in Section 5A to increase the penalties for noncompliance with the provisions of this ordinance, codified in the Administrative Code in Chapter 379, secondhand goods and dealers at Section 379-4A and Section 379-5A, and to change the department name from the Department of Community Development to the Department of Licensing, Inspections, and Permits throughout this ordinance.
At this time, oh, excuse me, as chair for the committee on rules, I recommend final passage of item 7A. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm reading the wrong, Mr. Wexler, I'm sorry.
As chairperson for the committee on finance, I recommend final passage of item 7A. Second?
On the question, as I said before, we did receive some cautionary note about a possible conflict with some federal law. Attorney menorah did investigate and said there was no substance to it, and that we should proceed with a vote on this ordinance. Roll call, please.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. McGough?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B for consideration by the committee on rules for adoption, resolution number 44, 2014, appointment of Rosetta Walsh, 2710 Cedar Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 1A505, as chairwoman of the Board of the Scranton Parking Authority. Ms. Walsh will be replacing Kathleen Stella, who was removed from the board by letter dated January 22, 2014. Ms. Walsh will fill the unexpired term of Kathleen Stella, whose term is scheduled to expire on June 1, 2015.
As chair for the committee on rules, I recommend final passage of item 7B. Second? On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
And Mr. McGough?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7B legally and lawfully adopted, and wish Ms. Walsh all the very best in this new position.
7C for consideration by the committee on rules for adoption, resolution number 45, 2014, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with Knowles Associates LLC for insurance brokerage services for a period of three years from April 1, 2014 through March 31, 2017, and with Brit State National Insurance Company, Indian Harbor Insurance Company, XL Insurance, Altera American Insurance Company, and Safety National Insurance Company for city insurance coverages for the period April 1, 2014 through March 31, 2015.
As chair for the committee on rules, I recommend final passage of item 7C.
Second?
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. McGough?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7C legally and lawfully adopted.
Yeah, I just have one more comment about inviting CECO to the caucus. Maybe I didn't explain myself good enough. I'm not questioning CECO's involvement with the city and in projects. I understand that, I know that. I'm just asking questions, the question of the administration. So I'm in favor of inviting the administration, but I don't know if it makes much sense to invite CECO, because then you might have to invite the lowest bidder also. I mean, I don't know if that, I don't think that makes much sense.
I don't think CECO should be invited to lobby for them to be awarded the contract. But as far as further explanation, and obviously, none of us up here are engineers, maybe for further explanation on where certain projects stand. I know Mr. Wexler brought up the Rockwell Avenue Bridge project, which is...
Right, and I've already requested that information.
Right.
So, I mean...
I just don't think it would hurt to have them in addition.
I don't want to beat a horse to death, but I just don't think it'd make much sense to have. I mean, I could understand the mayor, the DPW director, the city solicitor, whoever would like to answer this question and explain, but to have CECO there, I'm not questioning CECO. I'm not questioning their involvement in projects or anything.
If Mr. Rogan, just as you, or I'm requesting that members of the administration come and answer. If Mr. Rogan wants to ask representatives of CECO to be here as well, that's his prerogative.
Well, then I...
Would it be agreeable to have both parties, Peters and CECO? Would that be agreeable?
We could certainly extend the invitation to anyone.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you. Any other business? Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourned.
This meeting is adjourned. And please remember that next week, the meeting will be on Wednesday evening.